All the meetings ordered, please stand for the political leaders. Let's be reasonable of the United States of America to the republic which stands. Roll call please. Present.
Present.
Here.
Yeah. Here.
Presence. First item, no trustees are attending or faulty. First item is the mayoral report. We have a couple items here that we'd like to acknowledge first. And some sad news last week or a week and a half ago, former fire chief Bill Carney passed away. So again, his service to the community, to his family, and to send our condolences. We have Fire Chief John Cope here, and he is here to I want to discuss it or give a little background on Fire Prevention Week, but at least acknowledge that this is Fire Prevention Week. We have some handouts here, and we have a proclamation that we're going to read for Fire Prevention Week. So, the proclamation recognized as October ninth through fifteenth is Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the village of Antioch, the first fire protection district of Antioch Township, are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Antioch community. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires half. And whereas Antioch residents should be sure that every home in the home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Antioch residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Antioch residents will make sure their smoke detectors and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Antioch first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. And whereas Antioch residents that are responsive to public education members are better able to make personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas Antioch residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. It seems that I repeat there. Whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", effectively serves to remind Antioch residents that it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now, therefore, I Scott J. Gardner, Mayor of the Village of Antioch, hereby proclaim October ninth and fifteenth, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the community. I urge all people of Antioch to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week. And to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Illinois Fire and Emergency Services, join me in participating in the education efforts of the first fire protection district of Antioch Township during Fire Prevention Week 2022. Thank you, and remember, change your smoke alarms when we change the clock, yeah, change the batteries.
Change your clock, change your batteries.
Alright, so.
At least everything.
I think it's the first week of November this year or something, it's the time change. So, thank you for that, thank you for everything that the first fire district does for our town. We also want to acknowledge that September fifteenth through October fifteenth is Hispanic Heritage Month. And we also have Cyber Security Month, which is obviously important in this day and age. So, given that, that's my mayoral report for this week. We have citizens wishing to address the board. I'll have Madam Clerk read the instructions and ask the individuals to come up to the microphone to state your name and city of residence, and we'll go from there.
Procedure for public comment at board meetings. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village, and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor of the meeting reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. Okay, first up, we have Chief John Cope here.
Thanks for having me. We're being had. Sorry about the long proclamation there. But, you know, three minutes, I couldn't read it, so.
No, alright.
I'm not here to ask for anything, I just wanted to say thanks. I want to thank you for your support on Chief Carney this past week, this past weekend. We do totally appreciate all that love and affection for our firefighters, both past and present. Also, thank you for recognizing, all of you, Fire Prevention Week, it is an important time. Believe it or not, we've had two deaths, two fires in the fire district in the last 12 months. So it does happen in our own backyard. It can happen to you. Support, recognition from elected officials such as yourself are appreciated on our side. I take this rare opportunity, I'm not asking for anything this time, I just wanted to say thanks. Oh, well, unless you want to do something. But we've actually, so, thank you very much, have a great night, and.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mike O'Hara.
Thanks, Mike O'Hara, resident of Antioch. I'm here today, first I wanted to clear up, I mean, to address the board last, last meeting, and I want to make sure that there was no misconception or I let anybody to believe that this sales ticket tax for the theater was in any way meant to be a property tax. So, I know that some may have taken it that way. And I just wanted to be clear that we understand that this is a ticket tax for people that actually use the theater and not anything to go against property taxes. But that being said, I still do, along with others, I'm sure, have an issue with the tax in general. This tax is, in its own writing here, specified as, the village is willing to provide a loan payment assistance to the buyer for over 10 years or until the loan is paid off. The loan is supposed to be for, the sale was for $400, the rebate is up to $300,000, so 75% of the purchase price of the theater could be paid back. That's like, you know, offering anybody purchasing, power, excuse me for bumbling this, but for the village to assist anybody in purchasing personal property or for personal gain, I just don't feel that that is right. The other thing is, along with this agreement, it says that the village authorized, authority, or the corporate authorities of the village has determined that to generate the necessary tax revenues to assist the buyer with its financial obligation to be owner, so exactly what I was stating. One thing with that is it says that you have all determined that this, this is right. And you say that based on the village has reviewed the financial records of the Antioch Theater and proposed business plan of the buyer, and find that the buyer has the necessary expertise, skill, and ability to operate the Antioch Theater so that it remains a viable business downtown. So you're all agreeing that you have done your due diligence and you have checked any buyer, past buyer, whatever. And with that, I ask, in this agreement, does this also then, are you willing to agree to the hold harmless agreement for all the taxpayers or ticket holders, should this fail? Should the business fail?
Hi, Linda Monti, Antioch. Again, I want to thank the board for all the time and effort spent on doing the necessary due diligence to make sure I was qualified before the ticket tax was executed. I'm reading from the agreement here, and it says that second. Whereas the corporate authorities said it would be reviewed, I'm repeating what he said, review the financial records of the Antioch Theater and propose business plan of the buyer and find that the buyer has the necessary expertise, skill, and ability to operate the theater so that it remains viable business downtown. And again, it was also agreed that I had put skin in the game, which was $100,000 to show that I was, this would be a viable business and that I was qualified. This agreement is not as simple as a name change. Unless the same qualifications and financial capabilities apply to the new buyer. It's a decision that comes with consequence, if the due diligence is not, due diligence is not done, then the success of the theater is questionable. I'm sorry if the vision I presented has not come to life, no fault of my own. It could be amazing for Antioch, the theater's success is important to me, is as important to me as it is to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we have, moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. Any, who's to rule either of these items? Otherwise, move to approve, move to approve trustee Dominiac, second trustee Luther, roll call please.
I, yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Onto the regular business, consideration and approval of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of $181,368.72 to have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee Dominiac, any discussion? Roll call please.
I, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance approving a ticket sales tax rebate agreement, ordinance number 22-09-53.
We asked for motion to table this matter to the next meeting, which is 10/26/2022.
So moved.
Second. Motion trustee Luther, second trustee Dominiac. Any discussion? Trustee Pierce.
I think we should have an opportunity to discuss this tonight, if we pay, we'll build and discuss it.
I'd like to withdraw my second and just have an explanation as to why you're requesting the table.
Yeah, go ahead. So we have a motion from trustee Luther's second has been withdrawn from trustee Dominiac. Village attorney can.
A little bit, so. So, before we present this, trustee, would you withdraw your motion? Because if it's motion to table, not to debate this matter. And we can always make it again after a.
And.
Now we have a, we have a second, we have a motion without a second.
Good, so I'll withdraw it.
Okay. So as a preliminary matter, before we discuss this matter, if this motion is table or not discussed, or there is no discussion on motion table, there are certain provisions that still need to be worked out to see if this is an appropriate agreement for the board to consider as a majority. It's basically interesting.
And just so parties understand, there has been, since this last meeting, continual back and forth versus certain terms. So we can sit here and approve agreements that may not be agreeable between the parties, and we'll be back here again. So until there is something that we know that this other side would sign off on, we feel like it's premature to present that to the board.
So I would move to table it to 10/26 meeting.
Motion trustee Dominiac, second trustee Luther, roll call please.
Spears.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Yes. Four voting yes, three voting no, motion carries table to the October 26th. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing and approving a procedure for public comment at meetings of the board of trustees of the village of Antioch, Illinois ordinance number 22-10-55. Have a motion and a second, waving the second reading.
So moved.
Motion trustee.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, discussion. Any discussion of this matter? Trustee Pierce?
The only thing I want to say is, when the clerk read the rules at the start of the meeting, there was a statement in there about asking people to refrain from making derogatory statements about members of the board or the staff. I think we should include, and members of the public that are in attendance. I think we have to be fair to everybody and polite to everybody.
Definitely, and so the the purpose of, and we can make that amendment, the purpose of this is to codify it in the ordinance. So even though we read it, there's only no enforcement mechanism of the ordinance. So that's strictly all this matters, but I have no problem commending that portion. Any objection to that?
That's a good idea, thank you for bringing that up.
Alright. Any other discussion?
I wanted to see if we could also add it in because the whole point of this was to narrow down parameters of this. So I think that there, it should be added in there that, you know, even though it's saying that public comment can't include personal attacks, I think that needs to be narrowed down just a bit more in regards to, like, the Lake County Board, they have their rules for public comments. They have a section that says, persons addressing the board shall refrain from commenting about private activities, lifestyles, or beliefs of others, including village employees and elected officials that are unrelated to village business of village board and village government. So that, would that be acceptable?
I would think that what we have to do is pass this resolution and probably get back to separate amendments. No section, we would understand. Or we can accept the first reading. And trustee, trustee Dominiac?
This, to me, was a subset of what we had previously discussed at another board meeting that would include, I think, some of the language that trustee Berman is speaking to. I saw this as just codifying what we're doing now, but we still have more discussion based on our previous discussion about how we want to enhance the ordinance that you drafted, ensuring the sound.
Sure, and this doesn't mean we can't continue to discuss the ordinance itself. This is just to make sure that what we have here is actually enforceable and legal.
Okay.
Trustee, would you send me that, you know, I did pull back, I did speak, I did pull back language from the rules, and I did also speak to the parliamentary forum in county on this on order, on our ordinance and their rules, but if you could send me what you want to add, it gave you the ability.
Thanks. And once you receive that, you'll see it also, please. I want to make sure we're really careful about the infringement on people's rights to speak.
Absolutely, obviously, any ordinance like this or procedures or rules on this, we walk a narrow balance, as we talked about many times before this board, I will happily recirculate what will be exhibit A to this ordinance, showing a red line version with the language that the trustee has had on there. And if I have any legal arguments, one way or the other on this, or opinions, one way or the other on this, I'll also include those in the transmission memo or email.
Alright, any other discussion, not, roll call please. This is on the first reading.
First reading.
No, this is, maybe the second reading, because it's specific to the specific items of the comments that the clerk reads in the three minutes. It has nothing to do with decorum.
With the amendments of adding the public.
Right.
Yes.
Spears?
Yes.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving a settlement agreement with Commonwealth Edison. As of our Audit Solutions, Inc. in the village of Antioch, this is resolution number 22-79, do I have a motion and a second? So moved, motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. If there are discussion, your questions, Mr. Durkheim could just give an overview of what this is briefly.
Certainly, your honor. A few years back, we retained Asavar, that's how you say it, to audit our utility taxes, so all the addresses in the village that are paying the taxes should be paying utility taxes. So that company, their arrangement is we pay them a percentage for all the things that they find are not getting taxed, they, their contract is a percentage. It's 60%. So, some time ago, they got involved, I don't know, a lawsuit was filed, a settlement was arranged whereby it would settle with comment for all these utility taxes that weren't collected. So that's what this item is on the agenda. We should settle with many communities, and we are now, we've been offered a settlement for utility taxes that went unpaid, have been discovered, and it's money that we, ourselves would not have found without somebody on it.
What is the dollar amount?
Our percentage came out to about $20,000. It's about $20,000 is our portion, our cut.
Alright, any other questions? I'm assuming that we fixed or comment has fixed the problem.
That was part of it, yes, they permanently include these addresses as village addresses.
Alright. Roll call please. I, yes.
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 Yes. Yeah.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Last item on the regular business is consideration and approval, approval of an ordinance amending section four dash fourteen dash ten of the Antioch Village Code regarding licenses for the retail sale of tobacco products, ordinance number 22-10-56. Do I have a motion and a second, waving the second reading? So, motion trustee Mason.
Second.
Second trustee.
Waiting the second.
Waving the second reading.
So the current village code sets a cap at the number of tobacco licenses that are allowed in the village based on how many licenses were issued at the time the ordinance was codified. Because some businesses have closed, there are still licenses available that are not in use. So in order to make it similar to the liquor license process, this court amendment allows the licenses to be decreased once they are closed and the clerk will be listing out the licenses. So it will be, it will mirror the process in which the licenses are issued, and the village board would get approvals for each license.
Discussion trustee Dominiac.
I'm fine with this, I do have a question, though, when we passed an ordinance about vaping, we did not put in a number for how many places could sell vape products, or could be a vape store. I'm wondering if we shouldn't be then also including that here, because vaping is, it's not a tobacco, but it's a substitute, that perhaps we should amend this language to include that anybody who comes forward who's the go, you know, vape shop would have to come here as well.
The class C license is for vaping products.
Just vaping?
Yeah, the class C is just for cigarettes and vaping products.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Alright, roll call please. I, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next is the administrative report.
Thank you, your honor. I, we're making good progress on the police parking lot, I don't know if you took a look, but the contractors, moving and shaking out there. Going quite well, on target. There may be a change order coming, there are a few adjustments that have been made, we're negotiating right now, so one of the future meetings, I may be coming to change. Secondly, I'd like the board to be informed that pursuant to some of our objectives from strategic planning in the quarterly meeting, we have retained a consultant to do some staffing studies for the village. Take a look at our staffing with what we have planned and all these projects we're doing, and are we it's about a $10,000 contract. And those interviews, there's a person from GovHR that's coming out here, who's worked as a village administrator and city manager in several places, and is now a consultant. So they're coming out next week to do interviews. Not all staff has been interviewed, but I think there, for about three days, there how many, maybe 15, 16 of us are getting interviewed, including the mayor. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that, when that report is done, I think it's 30 to 60 days out, the board will get a copy of that report, so you can kind of consultant's view of how we're staffed. I also ask that consultant to just let us know if you see anything that looks like we're set up strangely or we're staffed weird or whatever, but just wanted the board to know that's happening next week. Now, not with the staff, gotta make sure we're staffed properly. That's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you. Village clerk, any report?
There's gonna be something, Ms. Brails coming out for Superman. Big bad, we promise.
Hopefully, they won't back him up and he won't trick or treaters.
Any, the, any trustee reports? Trustee Dominiac?
Mine is not really a report, it's just something that I'd like to clarify for the record. At last, the last meeting on 9/28, one of the residents got up and spoke during public comment. They made a comment at 8:29 that Ms. Linda Monti's rights were affected when she spoke at the 9:14 meeting. I did take an opportunity to review the video of that meeting, and first of all, the three-minute limit was announced. Ms. Monti began speaking at 1:15:38, and at 1:17:44, I informed the mayor that the timer was not on. The reason I'm bringing this up is because it's obvious from looking at the video that I'm the person that apparently interrupted. She began again at 1:17:54, the mayor reminded her at 1:18:09 of the clock, restarted at 1:18:12, and talked until, she talked until 1:18:57. At that time, I raised a three-minute question, and the mayor agreed. At 1:19:06, Ms. Monti asked if there were any questions. By my calculations, taking the amount of time that she spoke and subtracting the amount of time that there was discussion about the clock, she spoke for three minutes and two seconds. Now, further, it was stated that she should not have been cut off because it was an agenda item that she was addressing. This is not true, she was not part of the, she was not a party to the agenda item as she was no longer part of the theater agreement between Mr. Downey and his new employer. So, had she been still a member of that deal, she would have been able to speak longer, but her rights were not violated because she was speaking as a resident, and she had the right to do so. But she spoke for three minutes and two seconds. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. One item that I missed, and it was put up here at the dais. The village of Antioch's Park Department, this year has been looking at other avenues to get volunteers for our community events. In the past, it's been strictly relied on for the, I guess, Parks Board members has been the group of volunteers. That can become burdensome, so we have some information here in flyers that we are taking volunteers. We are giving certain perks, I believe, to the volunteers that do agree to help us with a certain number of events. And I'll give more information on that, but there are two events coming up. I'll give more information on that, but there are two events coming up, the ghost tours on October twenty-first. And the Treat the Streets, Hardest Fest, so um anybody that in the public that's interested in volunteering for those events can call the Parks. At uh three nine five twenty-one sixty, ask for Maritza or email her um at M Bluma, B L U M A. At antioch dot IL dot gov, so just want to make that announcement. With that, I entertain a motion.
Just one thing.
Yep, just one more trustee.
The one that got everybody stupid tonight. So the Halloween for the parents out there for the loose candy. The fentanyl looks like the Skittles, and at the bottom of the bags, throw it away. If you don't know what it is, throw it away. Look alike candy, you don't know what it is, throw it away, please. Check the bags. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then else, otherwise. Motion adjourn, trustee Maisick, or trustee, trustee uh Antioch, second trustee Maisick, um roll call please.
I, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, meeting's adjourned at uh seven oh three. We will um come back here at uh. Five minutes and start the committee at the whole meeting, and um see you then. I call the meeting to order at seven ten, uh roll call please.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here. Here.
Present, uh no trustees attending remotely, uh first item is approval of the September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion in the second? Don't move, motion trustee Luther. Second trustee Dominiac, roll call please.
I.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Uh mayoral report, um I'm just gonna. Skip over that for right now and um to address it during the regular business. So any citizens to address the board? Uh first item on the agenda is the discussion regarding cannabis dispensaries. Um as part of my um report update, Michael can probably speak to this further. Since the last meeting um with the presentation of the group that was here, um there had been some downtime and hearing back from them. It's my understanding that that group is maybe looking at a different site, or the dispensary have not come back with any new proposals. Um so I would uh suggest that there is no um topic ripe for discussion because other dispensaries that may come in. Very well may not ask for a um consumption as part of their license. Um so until they come back, it might be, why is it just table this? We have something related to discuss.
So you're looking at a motion to table?
We haven't, we don't know, this is disgusting.
I mean.
We're not taking any.
We're not taking any.
Just take it off.
We use table, you take it off for, for tonight's purposes.
Can, can I give an update on?
Sure.
Mike, can you give an update on people reaching out to you or?
Yes, third, well, as you well know, there was a previous um a group that came before the board two weeks ago. Um they have discussed with staff as of last week that they inquired about another site. Uh we've had some preliminary uh discussions with representatives of that site. Um we haven't had a chance to completely evaluate that. Um so um I, in all probability, that the advocate was hoping to proceed with a special use at the planning commission for next month, but. Based on the required due process, notice requirements, it looks like they will not make that meeting. Um so they're, they have not solidified a site. Um as my economic development report uh reflects, there is another group, um a developer from Naperville. Uh has um has a national cannabis dispensary. I was interested in the site one seventy-three. Trying to set up a meeting with him and the developer of that property at the International Shopping Center Conference next week in Chicago. Uh to see how interested they are in that site. Again, they're not solidified. That's that, that's a little more complicated because. The seller's looking for a developer to buy all ten acres, not just an outlot. So that, that is a little more complicated, that site, but nevertheless. Um we have a developer who's working with a national cannabis dispensary, who's expressed interest um in that site, one seventy-three. Uh they made it quite clear, this would be purely a dispensary, have no interest in consumption. Um so that kind of gives you a status to the, to the applicants we're potentially working with right now, or to the interested parties.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, hey Mike, these guys are just real estate developers. They don't even have a license. They're spending, they're gonna go out with a partnership of licenses, trying to find someone. That's the way I got.
That's their current business model? I mean, they, 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 they be, they were major, um they did own a major dispensary in Chicago. In fact, they were the first. Dispensary in Chicago, this company that presented in the US two weeks ago.
Right, but they don't have one.
Currently, they're a broker between people of license.
Right.
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding too.
But they, they know that, they understand they know the business because again, they were, they have a long record.
To get the state license.
It's a dispensary business.
A lot of.
Trustee Dominiac?
I don't know if there's.
No, no, I just.
I was just gonna say that if you have a meeting set up next week, it would be helpful, I think, to table this until. We have some more information about a potential other vendor and go from there.
All right, any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll, as things become, um we have relevant things to discuss regarding this topic, we'll bring it back to the meeting hall. All right, um so um moving on from that, is there any other business that needs to be discussed in the committee hall?
I'd like to present a quick executive session for litigation personnel.
Okay, um and I would also like to uh request the same uh for property acquisition.
Is that a motion that you made?
That is a motion.
Oh, may I second that motion?
Motion trustee uh Pierce, second trustee Dominiac, uh roll call please.
I.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. We're going into executive session. No further business to take place after executive session. Uh going to executive session at seven sixteen.